Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn and I am the City Council President. You always can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I’d like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. I’d also like to ask everyone to be respectful of each other, to not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you feel to comply, you could be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn—
Here.
—Counselor Lara, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia—
Here.
—Counselor Murphy—
Here.
—and Counselor Worrell. There’s only four present, no quorum. We don’t have a quorum, which means we’re not able to start the meeting at this time. I think my colleagues know that I do like to start the meeting at 12:00 and going forward. Once again, I will ask my colleagues to show up on time. Mr. Clerk, for the record, Counselor Flaherty is present. We’re in a brief recess until my colleagues arrive. We’re back in session. Mr. Clerk, can we do the roll call again to ascertain the quorum? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker—
Yeah.
—Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Durkin—
Here.
—Counselor Fernandez-Anderson—
Here.
—Counselor Flaherty—
Here.
—Counselor Flynn—
Here.
—Counselor Lara— —Counselor Louie Jean— —Counselor Mejia—
Here.
—and Counselor Murphy— —and Counselor Worrell. I had been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would like to ask City Council Murphy to please come to the podium and introduce our clergy for this afternoon. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. Thank you, everyone, for being here or tuning in. Today, I feel very fortunate, and I know many would agree, that Father Unie has agreed to open our council meeting today. My relationship with Father John Unie is mostly around his work as the chaplain for the Boston Fire Department and all of the good work you do for our first responders, and also as the pastor for the past 20 years at St. Cecilia’s Church, focused his ministry, which is something I know people really appreciate about you, is that your ministry is focused in education, health, spiritual growth, especially for those who are marginalized and impoverished. And before entering the seminary, Father John taught English at Christopher Columbus High School in the North End, no longer there, like many of our high schools in the city of Boston, and he ran his own landscaping business, the things you find out. But when he’s not presiding mass, you keep busy on many boards. Many people see your wisdom, and you’re an asset to many boards across the city: for the St. Cecilia House, which is a residence for seniors of limited income in the Fenway area, Health Equity International, and probably many others. But I know many people in this room probably have a very warm, personal story about you. I’m happy that you’re opening this meeting for us, and welcome to the council. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Counselors, President Flynn, guests. As we gather today—I haven’t been able to do this in a long time. It’s been actually a couple of years, so I thank you. It’s a real honor to be with you here today. With all the business at hand today for our city, and in the context of such a divided world and country, with all of us having this mandate to lead, to counsel, to govern, and to do goodwill, I invoke the God of our understanding of our many different faith backgrounds and traditions to come with us, to be with us today. And from my tradition, the Catholic Christian tradition, today’s All Saints’ Day, so we remember those who’ve gone before us. And I know every one of us in this room here today, no matter what our background is, has somebody that we love and miss deeply, and who we hold in our hearts, and whose spirits live on in us, so we think of them today as we go forward. Good and loving God, we give you thanks for the generosity of spirit and service gathered in this place. Bless these proceedings, the decision-making processes, and all the counselors who give of themselves for the greater good of our city and its most vulnerable and oftentimes most overlooked citizens. Bless the leadership that puts all ego need aside and puts the need of others to the forefront. Guide this process of all thinking and feeling and deciding, as this meeting convenes for the betterment of our city, and especially today, in the midst of all that’s happening in the world with war and terror, in the midst of addiction and housing crises that we’re all looking at and dealing with. We ask you to bless our people, the people of Gaza and Israel, Ukraine, the people living and struggling with addiction and mental illness, mass and caste, and all those trying to address these situations in meaningful, humane, and effective ways. Lastly, Lord, guide our city. This leadership here today, this council, inspire us and give them your grace. Amen. Thank you, everyone.
Could you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father John Unie, for bringing us together in prayer, and also being there for the men and women of the Boston Fire Department and their families, especially during difficult times. Mr. Clerk, can we check the record as reflected? Counselor Coletta is present. We do have several presentations today. The first presentation I do have the honor of introducing, and there’s another presentation from Counselor Mejia, and there’s another presentation as well from Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson. The group that I wanted to recognize and ask to come forward is a group from downtown Boston, Bridge Over Troubled Waters. As we know, November is National Youth Homelessness Awareness Month, and this organization is doing invaluable work in the downtown area, but also throughout greater Boston. Bridge Over Troubled Waters provides crucial services to homeless, runaway, and at-risk youth, including a large percentage of LGBTQ youth as well. They not only provide shelter, but they also help youth find pathways to education, mental health counseling, career development, transitional living solutions, community support, and much more. I’d like to ask them to come to the podium and recognize their work. If the group wants to come forward— At this time, I would like to ask Elizabeth to come forward and maybe talk about the tremendous work that your organization does, but also knowing that November is a critical month for Bridge Over Troubled Waters as well.
Thank you, Counselor. President Flynn, for having me here for the first day of National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. It speaks to your awareness of the problem and your willingness to resolve it. My name is Elizabeth Jackson. I am the president and CEO of Bridge Over Troubled Waters, the Boston-based nonprofit servicing homeless, runaway, and at-risk youth. At Bridge, we serve over 2,000 young people a year, ages from 14 to 24, who are often forgotten group. This is why National Homeless Youth Awareness Month is so important, to show people that homeless youth do exist and they need our help. The youth we serve are fairly evenly matched across genders, but not across racial and sexual orientation lines. Black, brown, and LGBTQ youth disproportionately at risk for experiencing homelessness. Most of you know us; some of you might not. Some of you have seen our medical van on the Boston Common in the evenings. It’s the first program of its kind in the nation and connects Bridge’s street outreach team each and every weeknight. But the van is just one of Bridge’s programs that are national models for services effective in helping the most troubled and vulnerable youth turn their lives around. Bridge also provides a street outreach team on a daily basis. I call it Bridge on Foot, that are trained outreach workers. Bridge is the local respondent for the National Runaway Safeline and the Safe Place Network. Bridge has licensed clinical counselors and trained experience in working specifically with homeless youth. Bridge runs a drop-in center with homeless youth that can take a shower, use a locker, do their laundry, or just hang out and be young people. We provide education and career development, counseling to help youth earn their GED, apply to school, start college, and learn a job skill. We are invested in a continuum, short-based, transitional housing, independent and single-parent housing for youth 17 to 24. So yes, I have over 100 young people that are living with me every night under the age of 24. Bridge provides assistance with youth looking for long-term housing through our Rapid Rehousing Program, which helps youth lease apartments on their own name. If I leave you with anything, I would say that Bridge is the university of life skills for our young people. Bridge has been around for over 53 years. We may be small, but we are mighty. We are very successful at what we do. Actually, not us. The young people are very successful and resilient at what they do. We just keep the doors open with your help. Thank you for having me here and allowing Bridge to bring our practice more to the forefront, to help and ensure you that we are able to provide and receive the best resources available when discussing or confronting the issue and services involving homeless, runaway, and at-risk youth. I leave you with this: When you think about policy, when someone’s asking you for money, when you’re talking about programs, please always ask, “What are you doing for youth?” Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I’m honored to have Bridge Over Troubled Waters in my district as part of District Two in the downtown area. At this time, I would like to present a proclamation to Elizabeth, but I want to ask my colleagues to come forward for a photo as well. Thank you to the dedicated and professional team from Bridge Over Troubled Waters. At this time, I would like to ask City Councilor Mejia to please come forward and introduce our next guest. Counselor Mejia.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Very excited, right? I just wanted to thank Council President for giving me the opportunity to recognize Ellis Early Learning. At today’s council meeting, Ellis Early Learning, formerly known as Ellis Memorial and Eldridge House, was founded in 1885. 1885, let that sink in. And evolved into a settlement house in its early years, a movement that believes strongly in education as a pathway to a better life, which remains at the core of Ellis today. For 138 years, Ellis Early Learning has worked with Boston’s children and families to strengthen Boston and support our youngest learners to develop the skills they need to be successful in school and in life. Ellis is a local and national model for inclusive, equitable, quality, early childhood education, and is among the most socially, economically, racially, and culturally diverse organizations serving the children of Boston. They provide infant toddlers and preschoolers with full-day, year-round care and education that is developmentally appropriate, culturally sensitive, and prepares them for the next stages of life academically and socially. Ellis Family Support Teams provide comprehensive support, access to services, including helping children understand their emotions and behavior, and helping families gain access to proper food and shelter. Ellis is among a select group of childcare organizations accredited by the National Association for the Education of Young Children and Partners, with the highest-quality organizations to implement innovative and effective social, emotional, and academic programs. I am incredibly honored to recognize Ellis Early Learning, and I ask the Ellis Learning community to come up and receive your citation. But before I move on, I just wanted to freestyle real quick, because this is where I usually speak from my heart, and I tend to flow a little bit better. I actually am so incredibly happy to be acknowledging Ellis Community today, in particular because one of your board members, Sean Kerr, shared a picture recently with me, and he was a little one in the 70s. And in that photo, there were little black children, you know, this was the most diverse photo that I had ever seen in the 70s of little ones learning together. And I came to this country at the height of the busing era in the 70s, when there was so much turmoil in our education system. And Ellis was such a beacon of hope then, creating space for people to see each other and learn with one another despite their race or their socioeconomic status. You guys were far beyond your years when you created that community, and you continue to do so in a city that is still very much segregated based on income and race. And so the fact that you still exist and create space for little ones to see themselves and see each other, and lead with love and compassion, is what gives me the great pleasure of not just recognizing you all today, but declaring Ellis Day here in the city of Boston to acknowledge you for your work, I mean, your commitment in making sure that all kids, no matter where they come from, can learn and thrive together. And that is why with great pleasure, I am excited to have you all come here to get your citation and to declare Ellis Early Learning Day here in the city of Boston. So come on down, Ellis family. You’re the next contestant on the citation list, right? Yes. And I’m going to ask my colleagues to, after we have someone from Ellis make remarks, to join us for a photo, and all that good stuff. So come on down, y’all. Let’s give it up, y’all, one more time.
I just want to say how grateful we are to Counselor Mejia for this honor. It is a tremendous honor for us to be recognized for the work that we love. It is our privilege to do this work in the city of Boston, which is so supportive of early childhood education and education as a whole. And so just tremendously humbling opportunity to be here with all of you today. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Counselor Mejia.
Thank you, thank you. And I also want to acknowledge the city, Mayor Wu’s administration, and Kristen McSwain for their dedication, working alongside our office. We were able to secure a million dollars to support early childhood education here in the city of Boston, so that we can increase wages for our early childhood educators. So I think that we invest in the things that we know matter. There are a lot of parents right now who are debating between sending their little ones to school or staying at home because they can’t afford it. And I think that there’s more that we can do here in the city of Boston to ensure that all kids have a strong foundation, because we know education is definitely a ticket out of poverty and a pathway for everybody to level the playing field. But early start gets you going in the right path. So congratulations for your work. And I know you guys were the recipient of some of those dollars, and you’re making and putting it to good use. So I’d like to ask my colleagues to come and take a photo. Thank you.
Yeah, they stand right there.
Good to see you. Thank you so much.
This is fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
This is yours. This is the official resolution.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we’ll—
Do I take both of these?
Take your of luck. You get both of those things, and we’re doing the official filings, which we’ll later analyze.
Thank you. Awesome, sir. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ellis Early Learning, for the incredible role that you play in the community. I also wanted to recognize a friend of mine who does some volunteer work with this organization as well, Kevin Phelan, who’s a business leader in Boston, was associated with the Ellis program. So just want to say some thank you to some of the dedicated volunteers and sponsors as well. At this time, I’d like to ask City Councilor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson to please come forward for our next presentation.
Salut, tout le monde. I always say to my friends— Of course, only one side of the room responds. So I’m going to give that a shot, okay? So far, so good? Merci à tous amis, à famille, Marie, yo, pouille là. Is that good? Okay. I’d like to call Marie Rose onto the stage, and I just said, you know, I speak French, but I always tell my friends, “I don’t speak Creole, Haitian Creole, but I’m with you. I’m one of y’all, but today, we’re going to speak Haitian Creole,” and then I gave it a shot. I’d like to introduce Marie Rose and family and friends, if you can join me, please. Okay. Thank you. I’m going to recognize you and then you can get speech, okay? Thank you. Thank you so much for everybody coming. This is awesome. Yeah. Come in, don’t be shy. Merci. Okay. I’d like to introduce you guys to Mariejos and Canton’s. Sorry, is the husband here? I don’t—
He’s here, he’s here.
All right, Canton. Marie’s journey from the northwestern part of Haiti to becoming an entrepreneur and healthcare professional in the United States is a testament to her unwavering determination and her profound belief in the transformative power of education. Despite facing numerous challenges, she persevered, working full-time while attending high school and sacrificing typical experiences for the sake of her education. With her strong faith, compassionate heart, and relentless determination, she not only achieved multiple degrees and certifications, but also embarked on a mission to make a positive impact in her community. Mariejos is a CEO of Priority Professional Care LLC, a company dedicated to providing essential mental health services at-risk individuals, and her recent venture, RTW Essential Wellness, further showcases her commitment to community well-being. Her business stands as valuable resources, and her gratitude for support she receives is palpable. As she continues her tireless work to ensure her business thrived and remained instrumental in the community, Mariejos Canton’s story serves as an inspiring example of resilience and compassion, making her a true leader and a source of hope in her community. I am proud to present to you recognition to her. She deserves this recognition, certainly, but she would be— And I’d like to ask you to speak more to why I’m specifically recognizing you today, but it’s absolutely amazing. Everybody appreciates beauty, and please, I welcome you, Marie.
Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the City Council, honored guests, and cherished residents of Dorchester, it is with immense gratitude and a heart full of appreciation that I stand before you this afternoon. From the picturesque water of Bassam Blue, Haiti, where my perception of the world was first shaped, I developed a deep-seated belief in the transformative power of education. At the age of 18, I began my journey, my American journey, initially settling in New Jersey before fighting my home in the heart of Boston. This journey was anything but easy. As I juggled demanding work hours while pursuing my education at Dorchester High, a true statement to commitment to building the brighter future. Throughout this journey, my faith in the love and support of my family, particularly my husband and our precious children, Terrence and Roosevelt, have been my pillars of strength. My academic pursuit has been recognized with several honors, including Bachelor, Chamberlain School of Nursing, Master in Quality System Management at National Graduate School, and Psych NP at Walden University, and multiple certification at Aesthetic Mentor in Waltham. health and wellness services to our tight-knit community. I want to take a moment to express our deepest gratitude to our Council member, Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, and the entire City Council for extending such a gracious invitation to us today. Your recognition to our work, RTW Essential Wellness, is not just an honor to us, it's a validation of the potential that lies within each and every member of our community when given the right support and opportunities. Our clinic, RTW Essential Wellness, stands as a beacon of hope and a celebration of diversity and perseverance. We are more than just a business, we are a community partner committed to uplifting and supporting our fellow residents. Our mission stands far beyond providing mental health and wellness services, sorry, but top-notch services. It is about inspiring, empowering, and positively impacting the lives of those around us. I want to reassure the City Council and all of Dorchester's residents that we are here to support, collaborate, and contribute to the prosperity of the well-being of our community in any way we can. Our doors are always open, and we are eager to be an active participant in the continued growth and success of this wonderful community. In closing, I would like to reiterate our heartfelt thanks to the City Council for believing in us and supporting our mission. I would also like to thank the City Council on behalf of the community. The work that you do is not easy, but it is important. Together, let us work, let us continue to work hand-in-hand, building a stronger, more inclusive Dorchester where every resident is seen, heard, and valued. Thank you, and may we all continue to strive for excellence and unity in your beloved community. Thank you.
Marie did mention, but this official resolution is to be resolved that the Boston City Council extend its congratulations to Marie Rose Canton, groundbreaking work in the first black Haitian woman-owned medical spa in the Boston metro area. Thank you. You are a phenomenal woman, and we appreciate you. Thank you. I'd like to ask my colleagues to join us for a picture. Thank you. And where, can you tell everybody where is your clinic?
We are at 51 Neponset Havel Dorchester.
And then, not everybody needs lipos, some of us need Botox, some of us need medical care, you don't know. We need to visit. It's not in my district, but you should support. Can I take a picture?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my love.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, for bringing this wonderful group to the City Mr. Clerk, can we ensure the record is reflected? Council Worel is present, Councilor Royo is present. We're onto the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her Honored the Mayor, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1650 and 1651, please.
Docket number 1650, message in order for your approval, in order to reduce the fiscal year 24 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $24,121 to provide funding for the property management department for the fiscal year 24 increase contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the New England Police Moneveling Association filed in the Office of the City Clerk on October 30, 2023. Docket number 1651, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for the property management department for fiscal year 24 in the amount of $24,121 to cover the fiscal year 24 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the New England Police Moneveling Association. The terms of the contracts are July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each year of the contract, as well as increases to the night shift differential and detail rate.
The Chair recognizes Council Worel, Council Worel. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And this is something I'm looking to suspend and pass. It is a raise for our municipal security staff and also increases the rate for our night shift and detail rates for our municipal security officers. So I'm looking to suspend and pass 1650 and 1651. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Worel. Before we go on to a vote, I'm going to recognize Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, I guess, Councilor Worel, Chair. I just wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation that this is coming forth, since we co-sponsored, myself and Council President Flynn, Council Baker, Councilor Flaherty, all at some point either filed or advocated or tried to move amendments during the budget to do this. Happy to see that there are funds to be able to increase this, to actualize exactly what we were fighting for, for our municipal officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. I also wanted to highlight the role this body played in advocating for these offices. Although I'm voting for this, I'm voting yes on this, I don't know how you can raise a family on a pay increase of 2%, of 1.5% on 2%. I'm fortunate that I have a good salary, my wife has a good salary, but to pay people peanuts is something I don't agree with. Again, I'm supporting this, but I will state for the record, I am disappointed. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote on docket, on the first docket, which is 1650?
Roll call vote on docket number 1650, Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Council Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Brayden. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council LaRue. Council Louis Jean. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Worel.
Yes.
Council Worel, yes. Docket number 1650 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote on the second docket, 1651?
Roll call vote on docket number 1651, Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Council Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Brayden. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council LaRue.
Yes.
Council Louis Jean.
Yes.
Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Worel.
Yes.
Council Worel, yes. Docket number 1651 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1652 to 1686.
Docket number 1652, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Allison Frazee as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1653, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Amanda Zatell as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1654, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Carolyn Goldstein as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1656, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Cecilia Rika as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1657, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Colin Knight as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1658, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of David O'Donnell as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1659, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Dorie Klein as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1660, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Fiarius Gray as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1661, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Giordana Nacogni as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1662, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of James Kopenberg as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1663, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of James Cedric Woods as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1664, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Jay Ash as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1665, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Jean-Luc Perit as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1666, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Joan Elacqua as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1667, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Juan Acebio as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1668, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Juan Arrelo Lopez as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1669, notice received from the mayor of the appointment Canisorn Wing Chenalte as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1670, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Kimberly Barzola as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1671, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Kira Singleton as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1672, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Lydia Low as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1673, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Rush as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1674, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Nathaniel Sidley as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1675, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Noel Trent as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1676, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Robert Allison as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1677, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Ruthie Louis Jean as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1678, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Samuel Chambers as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1679, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Suzanne Segura Taylor as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1680, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Tatiana Cruz as a member of the Commemoration Commission effective immediately. Docket number 1681, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Natalie Rifkin McSwain as a member of the Boston School Committee Nominating Panel for a term expiring October 25, 2025. Notice received, excuse me. Docket number 1682, notice received from the mayor of the reappointment of Joe Cole Burton as a member of the Board of Examiners for a term expiring October 26, 2025. Docket number 1683, notice received from the mayor of the reappointment of Alexander McLeod as a member of the Board of Examiners for a term expiring October 26, 2025. Docket number 1684, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Donald Alexis as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring October 26, 2025. Docket number 1685, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of October 18, 2023. Docket number 1686, communication received from the Office of Blackmail Advancement of the report entitled Blackmail Advancement Quarterly Report, July 1, 2023 through September 30, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before we take a vote on these dockets, I do want to recognize Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Clerk. That was a lot of dockets to read. I did just want to highlight docket 1668. At the beginning of these meetings, we usually hear a lot of names, but this one stood out, and I think everyone would agree, that Juan Lopez is a wonderful addition to this commission. So I did just want to highlight how Juan has been a public servant for over four decades. He started working here in City Hall. I know when I first started, he was my historian. He started working under Mayor White and then under Mayor Flynn and Menino and served as the coordinator for the Jamaica Plain and Mission Hill when we had little city halls out in the neighborhood. And also was the first mayoral Hispanic liaison. All he does for his community and here, us on the council, is wonderful, but I do know that his role as dad and grandfather, his face lights up. I think it's probably one of his favorite jobs he has, and I did just want to shout out, one thing I did see is a quote he has somewhere. The internet's a funny thing, you can find things, but one of the quotes he has written is, "In order to grow, thrive, and prosper, you need mentors, network, and support each other." So, que viva la hispanidad. So thank you for letting me just honor Juan, who's a wonderful addition to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Well said. Juan's been an excellent colleague, friend, community activist, community leader. I know many of my colleagues know him as well as I do, and on behalf of the entire body, especially the councils that have been here a long time, joining Council Murphy and saying congratulations to Juan Lopez for incredible work that he's done for the Mr. Clerk? Could I ensure that the record is reflected? Council Brayden is present, and Council Louis Jean is present. Mr. Clerk, on these dockets, 1652 to 1686, they will be placed on file. Matt has recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1385?
Docket number 1385, order for a hearing on stormwater management and flood hazard mitigation in the City of Boston.
This docket will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1434, 15111514, 21518, 1540, 1541, and 1544, together,
Docket number 1434, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $4,121,000. and expend the amount of $4,125,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 Public Safety Entering Point Support and Incentive Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund costs associated with enhanced 911 services. Document number 1511, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,181,789.09 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 21 AFG Health and Wellness awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund safety training and fitness equipment to support officer health and wellness. Document number 1514, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $533,200 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Prosecuting Cold Cases Using DNA awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund an increase in the number of cases where suspect DNA was identified and an increase in the number of convictions resulting from prosecution. Document number 1515, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $317,082 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund two criminalist positions, overtime, lab supplies, equipment, and continuing education expenses. Document number 1516, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $49,173.60 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Firefighter Safety Equipment Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the purchase of active shooter response gear, including ballistic vests and ballistic helmets. Document number 1517, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $24,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 Port Security Grant awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund third-party training consultants to deliver eight half-day, four-hour sessions of Module 1 of the Harbor Incident Response Training, HIRT-NY-002-RESP course. Document number 1518, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $16,387 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Port Security Grant Program awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund installation of two on-demand side sonar units onto Boston Police Department Harbor Patrol Unit vessels. Document number 1540, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,124,566 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Comprehensive OPO Stimulant and Substance Use Site-Based Program, COSSUP Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund and support pre- and post-arrest diversion of substance users to treatment in the area of Mass and Cass. Document number 1541, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $481,919 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Local Allocation awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the domestic violence management analyst at the Family Justice Center, a hub and center of responsibility coordinator, and a technology coordinator for multiple data collection, reporting, and records management systems. Document number 1542, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $446,406.09 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 State 911 Training Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunications staff. And document number 1544, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $70,172 in the form of a grant for the federal burn justice assistance grant reallocation awarded by the United States Department of Justice passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund annual Boston address verification procedures mandated by the Massachusetts Sex Offender Registry Board.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counsel Flaherty, you're going to read all of these together, and then we'll do individual votes?
Yes, we'll take them all together, Mr. President.
Okay. Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for reading the exhaustive list of 11. A public hearing was held on Monday, October 30, on dockets 1434, 1511, 1514, 1515, 1516, 1517, 1518, 1540, 1541, 1542, and 1544. Those matters were sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu, referred to the committee back on September 13, September 27, and October 4, respectively. Counselors in attendance, whereas you, Mr. President, along with Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Durkin, two-and-a-half-hour hearing, very exhaustive and asked great questions. Pertaining to docket 1434, this grant will fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services. With respect to docket 1511, the grant will fund safety training and fitness equipment to support firefighter health and wellness. 1514, that grant will fund an increase in the number of cases where suspected DNA was identified and properly processed for court proceedings. 1515, that grant will fund two criminalist positions, overtime, lab supplies and equipment, and continuing education expenses to help decrease the backlogs. Target 1516, that grant will fund the purchase of active shooting response gear, including ballistic vests and ballistic helmets. 1517, the grant will fund third-party training consultants to deliver eight half-day and four-hour sessions of Module 1 in Harbor Incident Response Training and increase preparedness. 1518, the grant will fund installation of two on-demand side sonar units onto Boston Police Department Harbor Patrol Unit vessels for assisting with underwater detection. 1540, the grant would fund and support pre- and post-arrest diversion of substance abuse users to treatment in the area of the Mass and Cass, as well as across the city. Target 1541, the grant would fund domestic violence management analyst at the Family Justice Center, also a hub and center responsibility coordinator, which would be working citywide, and a technology coordinator for multiple data collection, reporting, and records management systems. Target 1542, that grant would fund the training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunications staff. And document 1544, that grant would fund annual Boston address verification procedures mandated by the Massachusetts Sex Offender Registry Board. In attendance from the administration was Kevin Coyne, Deputy Commissioner, and Joe Shea, Director of Health and Wellness from the Fire Department, Chris Bailey, Sergeant, Port Security Harbor Patrol Unit, Julie James, Criminalist, DNA Technical Leader in Crime Lab at BPD, Nicholas Boar, Sergeant Detective of the Homicide Unit, Boston Police Department, Maria Chivers, Research and Development, Boston Police Department, Jenna Savage, Research and Development, Boston Police Department, Christopher Markounas, Operations Division, Boston Police Department, and Carmen Cari, Deputy Superintendent, Operations Division of BPD. In addition to those, other topics were raised with respect to BFD training and preparedness, BPD training and preparedness, harbor equipment that will help be able to detect body heat and help locate those underwater, helping other cities and towns, surrounding communities, stress management for 911 employees, as well as cold case using DNA, as well as enhancing the city's own crime lab capacities. So again, exhaustive on 11 dockets, very much needed, combination of police and fire, and my hope is we could move forward, accept the committee report, and pass these dockets. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. We'll do each docket separately, Mr. Clark. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1434. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1511. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1514. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1515. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1516. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1517. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1518. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1540. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1541. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1542. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. The final one, Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report passed of docket 1544. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very remiss if I don't comment and compliment our staff. Ron Cobb did a phenomenal job bringing all 11 together with expedition to do 11, but also during the hearing pointed out a couple of technicalities and some typos that would have made a big difference here. So through the chair to our very capable and trustworthy Ron Cobb, I just wanted to say thank you for his efforts.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Mr. Cobb, on behalf of the body, wonderful job, as always. Just want to highlight one issue that Counsel Flaherty talked about at length during this three-hour hearing, the important role our 911 operators play in this city. We don't have enough of them, they're underpaid, very stressful job, it's having an impact. Counsel Flaherty, you were able to work with the administration to get people hired into these critical positions on behalf of the body. I want to say thank you to you, Counsel Flaherty. Before I go forward, I do want to recognize Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was late in arrival, so I'd like to vote in the affirmative on the first two dockets that we voted on in my absence when I wasn't here.
Mr. Clark, can we go back to those two dockets the Counsel Braden mentioned?
1650 and 1651.
Okay. And we'll add your name, Counsel Braden.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. We're on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Okay. Docket 1687 has been withdrawn at this time. Mr. Clark, can you please read docket 1688, please?
Document number 1688, Counsel Arroyo offered the following: Order for a hearing to establish parking benefit districts in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, parking benefit districts, something that was brought to my attention after the cities moved forward with the Rosendale Square parking plan, which includes meters. Parking benefit districts are allowed under the Massachusetts Municipal Modernization Act, and the parking benefit districts creates specific geographic areas from which parking revenue was collected and then reinvested back into that specific area or district for transportation-related improvements. Several cities, which include Arlington, Brookline, and others, have effectively utilized parking benefit districts to manage parking supply and generate resources for commercial area improvements. These districts are managed by designated bodies such as Main Streets, Community Planning Groups, or Business Movement Improvement Districts. And in 2023, the city moved forward with a plan for meters in Rosendale Square, which I support, but I also support the idea of parking benefit districts, which ensure that the money that is collected by those meters in that area is then reinvested in that area for specific improvements to, for instance, in this case, Rosendale Square and that area. This is a hearing or a hearing request to see what steps we can take to make that possible. When we were looking at doing this, we were simply going to try and move forward with an ordinance, and I want to thank the Rosendale Village Main Streets, Brendan Fogarty, and Vinnie Faig for bringing this to my attention in terms of these parking benefit districts. But when we were looking at it, we currently aren't, even though the state allows for parking benefit districts, for whatever reason, in the city of Boston, we don't have them. And I think if we are going to create meters, which I think help move traffic along and do help, they should also take that money that comes from those meters that are coming from folks frequenting that area or those businesses and reinvest them into beautification projects within those areas, whether that's Mattapan Square, if they move forward there in the future, or Rosendale Square, where they are currently moving forward, making sure that we are taking that money and keeping it home so that the Rosendale residents and the folks who are experiencing this at a higher rate than any other part of the city are, in terms of having to pay to go to their businesses down in the square, are able to see that money reinvested and tied to their district so that that money is coming right back where it is. I think of it similarly to the way that folks in South East know that when the toll boosts came up, they had the different colored EZ passes that allowed for a different rate of toll because they had to take it more often. I think, in fact, generally speaking, that there's not really an easy way to avoid it when you're coming through East, but the idea here is similar. Folks in the neighborhoods who put more money into these meters should see that money directly benefit the areas in which they are placed. And so that's the goal for this hearing, is to figure out how we go about setting this up around the city so that it's not just thrown into the general pool or the general fund and sent in different directions, but in fact goes to things like plants, planters, new lines, all the things that happen within these areas that could use this money. So calling for a hearing for that. I wasn't sure which committee you would assign this to, Mr. Chair, because I think it could fall into several, but happy to have it in any of them, to have a hearing to just sort of discuss how we move forward with an idea for parking benefit districts here in the city of Boston as they've effectively been shown to work in places like Arlington and Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Arroyo, for bringing this issue forward. Parking benefit districts are actually something we've been talking about and looking at and are in Austin-Brighton for some time, and I think it certainly merits a discussion to think of, to try and maintain and upgrade and revitalize and keep our main streets vital and free up curb space so that someone doesn't park their car in the Main Street District and leave it for the whole day and come downtown and then pick it up in the evening. That space is not available for somebody who just wants to patronize the local flower shop or the local bakery. So I think parking benefit districts are certainly something well worth looking into, and please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The chair recognizes Counsel Coetta. Counsel Coetta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just want to commend the maker for his creativity in looking at solutions when trying to solve for the perennial issue of parking in the city, East Boston-Churston and the North End, highly dense neighborhoods, and so this is something that I hear quite often from constituents on. I just want to shout out the parking clerk and his office and BTD and everybody who's working with a contracted third-party vendor. And I should also shout out Do It as well, where we are auditing all of the parking regulations in the city of Boston, almost like Google Maps. We're taking what all the signs say on all of our city streets. It's going to take a long time, and then from there, we're going to look at a holistic plan for parking regulations in the city of Boston, digitize them. And I think that's a wonderful endeavor to take on, and from there, we'll be able to have efficient From there, we'll be able to have efficient enforcement, which brings in more revenue, and this should be a part of that. And I am fully supportive and just want to again commend the maker and please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coetta. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Coetta, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council We're All, please add the Chair. This docket, please add Council Fernandez Anderson. This docket, 1688, will be referred to the Committee on City Services Innovation Technology. We're on to docket 1689 and 1690.
Docket number 1689. Council Murphy offered the following. Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding Boston Public School summer school incidents. And docket number 1690. Council Murphy offered the following. Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding ADA compliance at English High School.
The Chair recognizes Council Murphy.
Thank you. I am re-filing the same 17Fs I filed before because I still haven't gotten any information. The first one I filed on August 30th. Filed a second time on September 20th. And I'm filing again today on November 1st. The second one for, I filed on September 27th and still have not received the information. So there's no change to the request. I hope people sign on. It's taking months to get information and requesting that we get that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Murphy, I'm not questioning the right to get this information, but can you give us a highlight of the information that you're requesting?
Sure, yes. Sorry, I know people are probably sick of me asking for this. The first one was at the end of the summer hearing that there were some incidents that, for me, I wanted the information of the summer school violations to the Code of Conduct to support with the school year also. There was a heightened concern going into the school year that we didn't have enough social workers, mental health support, and support for our staff, always support also for our students to make sure that they feel safe and have the supports needed in school. So that information was requested back on August 30th. I've had a couple of conversations with IGR, but again, today, being told they're still even questioning why I would want it or what's the intent. But I have spelled out the intent several times, and I'm pretty sure that why doesn't really matter if we have the power to ask for the information. And they always make sure that the student's privacy is kept. It's always blacked out. So I would never use, and no one on this body would ever, I believe, use any student privacy information in a way that would be unprofessional. The second one is the 17F on the year-long, I would call battle for the ramp to be equitably updated for the students in wheelchairs. We were there October 12th of 2022, myself and Council President Flynn here for ADA Day in the chamber, along with the mayor, and all of the high school special education students come to City Hall on that day. That was the day that Elvis from the English High School sat there where you are, Mike, in his wheelchair and with the assistance of his teacher and his iPad, was able to use his technology to request that we do something about the access for the students who get off the wheelchair buses at English High. I've had several conversations with staff and the custodians and others who have tried to, and there was even a picture attached, to make it so that the teachers aren't lifting the students, and the students do fail as though their entrance and their start to their day is as equitable as others. So still trying to get the information so that... I was also promised, when I did a walkthrough back in May with the Principal Murphy and Megan Costello, that all of the departments did, even though I was not part of those conversations, they did promise me in May of this year that it would be completed by the end of the summer. So on the first day of school, the ramp would be adjusted. Nothing was done. So I'm continuing to ask what happened when we were promised that the work would be completed. And I do just want to make it clear that this is a very minor job. This isn't something that should take much time or even much money. It could be done in a day, like once things are ordered and paperwork is filled out. So this isn't a request for any major change to any type of structure in the system. But I did request all information of communication leading up to this point to find out where did we fall short. Because at the end of the day, I owe it to the promise I made to the teachers and the students at English High. We were here again just a couple of weeks ago, Council President Flynn, for 2023 ADA Day. The same students were here. And when I mentioned it, they asked again, and they all cheered that, you know, it's going to happen. There was also a few students from Brighton High. So I do think when we bring our special education students in on such an important day of Civic Engagement Day, and we tell them they can ask, and this is their City Hall also, and they speak up, and then we fail them and we don't follow through, that's concerning to me. So this information, for me, is going to help us get it done. Because at the end of the day, I'm pretty sure any one of us here, if we work together, we could do it ourselves. Like, this isn't a big job, but it just needs to get done. So this information will help move it forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. I'm going to speak briefly on this. If there is a child in the BPS system that doesn't have the same and equal access into the building, that's unconscionable. Let me say, I want that ramp fixed. I want that ramp fixed immediately. And I want to give the BPS 14 days to do it. No exceptions. Council Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket, 1689. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Council Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1690. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 1691.
Docket number 1691. Council Mejia offered the following. Resolution recognizing November 3rd, 2023 as Ellis Early Learning Day in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council Murphy as an original cosponsor.
Council Murphy is added, but the Chair recognizes Council Mejia.
Yeah, earlier this morning, we had the pleasure of recognizing Ellis Early Learning. And now I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and vote to recognize November the 2nd, 2023 as Ellis Early Learning Day throughout the city of Boston, a day to remember the power of early childhood education and all of the boundless potential within each and every child. That here in the city of Boston, which is known in the world around, over the educational excellence, we will work to ensure that every child has a wonderful childhood and access to opportunities Ellis offers all its students. I hope that my colleagues will vote in the affirmative to officially recognize tomorrow, November the 2nd, 2023, as Ellis Early Learning Day here in the city of Boston. And I wanted to just acknowledge that I'm really excited to be doing this resolution in partnership with Council Murphy. You know, oftentimes, I hear in spaces and places that I should just get over the fact that busing occurred, but I think that this is really a pivotal point because in the '70s, at the height of the turmoil that we were experiencing here, this particular institution brought kids from across the city of Boston, despite their racial, socioeconomic status, their backgrounds, all together to be able to learn in an environment where we did not believe that would be possible. And so I'm really honored to be recognizing this day alongside someone else who survived that moment here in history in the city of Boston because I believe that our collective journey in this space and to recognize this particular school as what was possible then gives me a lot of hope in terms of what is possible today. So I thank you, Council Murphy, for joining me in this recognition.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to Council Mejia for letting me join in. As we were here earlier, we heard the wonderful work they do. And I was an early childhood educator for over 20 years and know the important wraparound services and how they provide what every child in the city of Boston should receive. And they're a real model to model after. And I'm happy that this administration is using them as a model also to expand our universal pre-K seats, which is something I'm absolutely supportive of continuing to expand for our young families. Our young children need to have access to quality childcare, not just a place to leave your children, but ones we know that are teaching them culturally, sensitively. And another thing that stuck out to me about this learning center, which many do, but they really care about the emotional support of their staff. And that is something that we need to make sure that not only do we pay our young teachers of toddlers appropriately, but we also support and uplift the enormous work it is to work with our young children and mold our future. The foundational years are so important. And then when they pass on to their Boston Public School or other schools, if they have a strong foundation, they're at a much better shot of succeeding in the city here. So thank you for filing this, and I hope our colleagues join us in passing it.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Coetta, Council Durk, and Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean. Council We're All, please add the Chair. Council Arroyo. Council Mejia. And Council Murphy. Seek suspension of rules and adoption of this docket, 1691. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has been adopted. I just wanted to make one note on some dockets that we voted, that were placed in committee relating to an ordinance to create the Boston Commemoration Commission. Those did not need City Council confirmation. Before I go to the next docket, I do want to recognize Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, like Council Braden. I just want to make sure I add my name. I was in present for dockets 1650 and dockets 1651. I believe those are the numbers. So we'd just like to add my name to those as well. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you reflect the record for Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1692.
Docket number 1692. Council Flynn and Murphy offer the following. Resolution commemorating Veterans Day and honoring all those who served our country.
The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Braden. Could I add Council Mejia as an original cosponsor?
Hearing no objection, Council Mejia is added. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Veterans Day is coming up. It's a day we recognize the service and sacrifice of veterans here in the city of Boston and throughout the country. We recognize them for their service. We recognize them for their sacrifice. We also recognize their family. When a veteran serves, so does their family. We also know that there's unique issues that are impacting specific veterans, such as women veterans, that they need gender-specific quality healthcare at the VA facility. They get it here at the Boston VA Regional, but all the VA facilities across the country are not the same. What happens in one part of the country has an impact here. So we need to do more work in support of women veterans. We need to do more work for LGBTQ veterans as well. When I first went in the military, gay and lesbians could not serve. I stayed in, and I stayed in during Don't Ask, Don't Tell. And veterans, military members, rather, could serve. Gay and lesbians could serve, but they couldn't serve openly. And finally, I was in the military during, when veterans and military members were able to serve openly. We've come a long way. We need to recommit ourselves to supporting our veterans, homeless veterans right across the street. We have the New England Center for Veterans. Receives federal money, receives state money, and city funding as well. But our city of Boston plays a critical role in support of veterans. We have an outstanding commissioner, Rob Santiago. And that department really does a tremendous amount of work, especially assisting veterans in need. Many homeless veterans, low-income veterans, seniors that are veterans. So it's important that we support the city of Boston Veteran Services, acknowledge the important role they play. It might be a small department, but it does have a lot of influence in terms of helping people, especially helping people in need. I do want to say, as we approach Veterans Day, it's important for all of us to acknowledge the service of veterans, but it's even more important when we come to this body, come to hearings here, or come to the budget, or come to programs and services for veterans in need, that we always stand up for veterans. And sometimes we have to educate each other about the role veterans play in our community. And at times, we don't know the critical role veterans play in our neighborhoods and services available to them. But it's about all of us working together, supporting veterans, especially veterans in need. We can never turn our back on these veterans. They were serving our country during very difficult times, such as the Vietnam War or the Korean War. When they returned, they weren't respected. African-American veterans weren't respected when they returned home. But this body, this city, has always supported veterans, whether we support a particular war or are against it. But we can never turn our back on veterans in the city of Boston. Thank you, Council Braden.
Thank you, Council Flynn. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor. Just get to the... There we go.
Thank you. I just think it's important to remind us all, myself included, that Veterans Day is just one day, but we should be making sure that we're remembering uplifting in this role here on the council also, making sure that we're doing all we can to support our Veterans Department, but also many of us, our district councils. We have so many veterans in our communities that reach out to our offices in need, and we need to connect them to so many different departments. So this is a day where we remember the sacrifices that our veterans, our soldiers, and their families made. But for me, it's more of a commitment, making sure that we don't just think about them in November and that we remember them throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to join you on this resolution. I just am going to just take a quick moment to just acknowledge that my cousin, Juan Peña, was a veteran. And it took his life. And when we think about veterans and we think about everything that they're going through, oftentimes, we neglect to see the post-traumatic stress that so many of our loved ones who are coming back face and have to deal with. So I just wanted to acknowledge my cousin, who went on to become a police officer in Virginia after being born and raised here in the city of Boston, dedicated his life to a life of service. And so I just wanted to acknowledge him and his service to this country and why I'm grateful for being allowed to join you all on this. And I also just wanted to uplift veterans like Jaime Rodriguez... And I also just wanted to uplift veterans like Jaime Rodriguez, Tony Molina, and so many others who have dedicated their life to this country and service. And so just really grateful to join you all in celebration and acknowledging those who every day protect and serve and fight so that we can have our freedoms here in this country. So I just wanted to thank both Counsel Flynn and Murphy for allowing me to join you all here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much to Council President Flynn and Counsel Murphy for sponsoring this. I just wanted to uplift, in my district, the Mission Hill, the work of the Mission Hill Post and Commander George Rollins, who does an incredible job advocating for our veterans in Mission Hill. And obviously, our oldest living Tuskegee Airmen, who I'm really honored to be friends with, Woody Woodhouse, an incredible example of civic leadership and everything he's done. Got the chance on Veterans Day to sit with him for brunch and talk about the history and all of the things in Boston he's been involved with in founding. My own family members who have served in the service, I really appreciate that history and that legacy that my family, and want to thank, obviously, our Council President for his service. I think we're here to honor them, the people I've mentioned, and many more. And I also want to give a nod to the city workers who have joined our city workforce after serving in the military. And obviously, Veterans Day is a chance to honor them, and so I want to thank my colleagues for sponsoring this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Would anyone else like to add their name? Or anyone else like to speak? Okay, Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to the sponsors and to all who have served. I just stand, my cousin was going to be here, was the Chief of Staff to Rob Santiago at Veteran Services and who I look up to so much, and I am just grateful for his service and how he helps our veterans every day here in the city. So Sir Pierre Darius, who I, it's difficult calling him his government name, because I call him something else, Tishali, who's often here in chambers with me and just always helping by my office, just exemplifies service in each and every way. And I know, obviously, Council President has served, and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson's son is serving, so there are so many examples of service. And just want to give a credit to all the folks in the city who help our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. Would anyone else like to add their name? Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Worrell, and please add my name. Counselors Flynn, Murphy, and Mahia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1692. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Before we go on to personnel orders, let me just make one quick comment. Yesterday, had the honor to join many colleagues here for the swearing-in ceremony for a former city councilor, State Senator Lydia Edwards, who was the First Lieutenant in the National Guard. They had a wonderful celebration in Charleston at the USS Constitution. And when Counsel Edwards was on this body, she talked about and filed hearing orders and resolutions frequently about veterans' issues and military families. And she always had great respect for her mother, who was a US Air Force veteran for over 20 years. But when Counsel Edwards would speak about veterans' issues on the floor, she might speak for eight or nine minutes, but you could hear a pin drop. She would be talking about the sacrifices of women veterans and military families. But we're proud of Counsel Edwards, Senator Edwards now, for her commitment to the, to our country, but also the incredible work she does as a State Senator, working closely with so many of our colleagues here. So congratulations to Lydia Edwards. We're onto personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1693.
Docket number 1693, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Durkin.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. That's the only personnel order at this time. We're onto late files. There are two late files. The additional late file matters include two personnel orders. There's four, four personnel orders?
Three personnel orders.
Okay. The late file matters include three personnel orders and one absent letter. These dockets should be on everyone's desk at this time. I'm going to take a minute to ensure that they're on... Yeah. Mr. Clerk, can we take a vote to ensure, to add these late file matters into the agenda? All those in favor of adding these late file matters into the agenda, please say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, these late file matters have been added. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the first personnel order?
This is the absence letter.
You would... Okay. Please read the absence letter.
Dear Council President Flynn, I am regretfully unable to attend today's council meeting due to being sick. A member of my staff will be present to take notes and report to me as needed. I look forward to reviewing the recordings of the meeting. Sincerely, Counselor Kendra Lara.
This will be placed on file.
Second late file personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Arroyo.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has been passed.
Late file matter, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Arroyo.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this late file matter has passed.
And Counsel Flynn for Counsel Flaherty.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed. We're onto green sheets. Anyone wishing to pull something from the green sheets may do so at this time. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull docket 1573, which is a message in order for your approval, an order that will amend Chapter 6, Section 611, the Gender Inclusion Ordinance to Incorporate Best Practices Regarding Gender Identity Inclusion, which can be found on page 11 of the green sheets.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Mr. Clerk, can you please read that into the record?
From the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 1573, message in order for your approval, an order that will amend Chapter 6, Section 6-11, the Gender Inclusion Ordinance to Incorporate Best Practices Regarding Gender Identity Inclusion, filed in the office of the City Clerk on October 16, 2023.
Mr. Clerk, can you please pull the committee?
The Committee on Government Operations, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
And Counsel Flaherty.
This docket is properly before the body. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This proposal would amend City of Boston Code, General Services, Chapter 6, Section 611, by striking the paragraph that begins with the words, quote, "All existing in city issued forms," end quote, and inserting in place the following paragraph, quote, "All existing in city issued forms, documents, and certificates that provide for a gender or sex designation shall do so using language that includes all genders and family structures. All forms shall include an option where an individual may designate their chosen name if different from their legal name." I was absent the day this was filed, otherwise I would have moved for a suspend and pass. But today, I'm moving that this docket ought to pass so that we can make sure that our forms and our systems are as inclusive as possible, which is the idea of the Gender Inclusion Ordinance that we passed in this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo moves for passage of this docket, 1573. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're onto the consent agenda. Okay. I have been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The Chair moves that, the Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're onto memorials. For Counsel Flaherty, Rolene Denise Rose. For Counsel Louie Jean, Jean Robert Cassous. For Counsel Murphy, Mariana F. Rosa, an employee at Foodies. For Counsel Lara, Ann Murphy. Vaquita Maxwell. For Counsel Baker, Gerald L. Jerry Anderson. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of those mentioned individuals. We are now scheduled to meet again in the Ionella Chamber on Wednesday, November 15, at 12 noon. Before we adjourn, I do want to say thank you to the clerk, the assistant clerk, my city council colleagues and their staff, city council central staff as well. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.